Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the regular meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission, this being December 7th, 2020. And I'd like to ask the clerk at this point to call the roll.
Chairman McGee.
Here.
Place Chairman Lord is expected. Mayor Bixson.
Here.
Mayor Protem and Secretary Bavacqua.
Here.
Commissioner Clark Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Gosson is excused. Commissioner Hauser.
Here.
Commissioner King. Expected. Commissioner Stone.
Here.
Very good, thank you. We have a quorum. I would like to ask our Deputy Mayor Dean Bavacqua to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Where's our flag? There we go.
I think he's muted.
Dean, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. So you want me to do the Pledge of Allegiance, you said?
Please, please do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, sir. Number three is public comment. And at this point, I want to welcome the public who might be watching us on community TV and repeat to everyone that this is a virtual meeting. It looks like this process will continue sometime into the future. It looks like the governor and the legislature will extend the time in the next year that we can continue to meet virtually. Just to remind everyone, though, the votes taken by the commissioners do count. And so anything that comes before us that is voted on actually has effect. That's an unusual thing, but as a result of the COVID situation, that's how it works right now. There is a telephone number displayed on the screen, should be at the bottom of the screen. And at any time you have a comment or would like to join in our discussion, please call that number. Sienna, and at the appropriate time, she will patch you in. You'll be able to speak with us directly. With that, Sienna, I'd ask, do you have any public comments, either in writing or in person, waiting for us?
I do not.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item, number four, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 19th, 2020. Commissioners, if you all had an opportunity to look at the minutes, and if you have any corrections, deletions, additions, this is the time to do it. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Who is that that moved?
Stone.
Mr. Stone, and whose support?
Support.
Support.
Okay, did you get that, Maureen?
I think that was Mayor Bixson's support.
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion? The roll call, please.
Stone.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Clark Martin.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Lord.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. McGee.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, moving right along, number five, consideration of the 2021 Regular Planning Commission meeting schedule. That means we're actually going to get out of 2020, isn't that great news? Sienna, did you put this together and do you have any comments for us?
I did. No, I do not have any comments. I just want you guys to look at the schedule just so you will have an idea of when the meetings will take place. Obviously, they will follow the same first Monday of each month. And I guess third Thursday for the second meeting, should we have them? And I guess I would just hope for a blessing from the planning commission.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Dean has moved and the mayor has supported. Any other discussion on the, on the schedule for next year? The roll call, please.
Bavacqua.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Clark Martin.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Lord.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes. Thank you very much. Number six, discussion regarding the annual planning commission report for 2020. For those of you who are new, the planning commission is required to make an annual report to the city council on our activities for the year. And Sienna and the staff have graciously put together this summary of the report. And I'll ask you again, Sienna, if you have any comments on this or you want to take us through it.
I can, or Vidya, would you like to take us through this? It's up to you. It doesn't make a difference to me. Not a problem at all, Sienna.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. 2020, even considering the pandemic, has been a very productive year in the city of Rochester. The planning commission, including tonight's meeting, met a total of 18 times.
Wow.
That is a pretty significant number of meetings by any standards. Even though we had pandemic put a slowdown on many projects and many developers had to reconsider when they will apply. Many projects got slowed down because construction was also put on halt by the governor's orders for some time. It's still, Rochester remains a very desirable place to live in and play and do business. So we still have interest in residential developments, office and industrial developments. We haven't really seen a major economic slowdown in the city and we anticipate that in the next year too, we'll continue to see growth and maybe redo of existing sites that need help. Some of the site plans that we dealt with are listed over here. Actually, all of the site plans, the big ones over here would be the brownstones on Main. That site finally got approval for a new project after the previous projects fell through. Riverfront Place went through its, after starting the project in 2017, they finally got through the planning commission. So that was a pretty significant milestone for that project. Couple of older buildings were repaid such as Month House and West University, University Trails Medical. That building had got partially empty. The planning commission was able to approve a plan so that the building can be reused. Two Ten Division, another big project down in the most active part of the city. He seems to have, seem to have all the projects coming along First and Division area. So that project is in discussion. Other small projects such as the City Hall, Vestibule Project, the BP Gas Station renovation at the corner of University and Main Street, small additions to Pfizer and some addition to our pharmaceuticals. So overall, it has been busy, lots of small projects, a couple of big ones. We do know there are other developers who want to propose projects. I think they're just waiting and hopefully we will see them step forward in 2021. With regard to ordinance amendment, we made changes to the supplemental district regulations, which was mostly the infill ordinance, all the small changes that were under discussion at the planning commission for a long time. Lots of clarifications got that through. And the city attorney also worked on and clarified the light and illumination ordinance. Finally, the planning commission had requested me do a review of how the Sustainable Rochester worksheet had worked so far in the city. And there was ample discussion that we come up with a slightly adjusted worksheet, which gave weighted averages, the various scoring 20 indicators. I presented to you in April, a revised scoring indicator because our current scoring sheet that we use is for all projects, whether residential, industrial or commercial, whether it's a DDA or not DDA. So an industrial project that is located on South Street automatically is ineligible for eight out of the 20 indicators. So even if they did their best, they would probably score 12 out of 20. So the new sustainability worksheet gave adjusted, adjusted scores. So they would score higher points and some based upon the type of use and where they are located. I also ran that adjusted criteria against all the projects that you had previously approved. So you got to see that. We haven't progressed beyond that. The next step will be if planning commission is happy at the revise. It's been a while, so I would be happy in January to do a refresher on new weighted average score sheet. And if you're happy with it, you can send it on to city council so that they can adopt it as a policy and we can start applying that weighted average score sheet.
Would you please plan on doing that? We would appreciate it.
Yes, I will definitely coordinate it with Sienna based upon availability of the planning commission meetings. And we will discuss and move the sustainability worksheet along. And finally, the master plan, the city went out for bids to update their master plan, which is due for updating. The five-year time period has passed, so we need to do this. And the city selected Beckett and Raider, new consultants, to do the master plan update. That work is expected to come through in July 2021. I believe new consultant is on here tonight in order to introduce themselves to the planning commission. So Sienna does a wonderful job of keeping the planning commission informed at all points of time about the projects coming forward for your next meeting. So we hope to continue doing that in the next year and hopefully we'll turn the corner with this pandemic. Although I must say, I don't miss the one and a half hour drives each way to every planning commission meeting in the snow. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to work for the city. It's, it's been a very interesting year. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Sienna or Vidya on the annual report?
I'm just curious, do we have any updates on some of the bigger projects that were more recently approved? If anything's moving forward? I know a couple had bonding requirements and agreements they needed to come up with, with city council.
Hi, Sarah. At the last meeting, I know you weren't there, but Nick did share an update as far as Riverfront finalized in their development agreement and they sent it into Attorney Crock. So that is, I guess, to be determined if that is, if that will suffice and then it will be taken to city council.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We're looking, Sarah, we're looking at one of the meetings in January dedicated pretty much to the Riverwalk. So we're thinking that they're going to have all their conditions met at the planning commission that and then we're going to have the ultimate, or whatever the word is.
Yes.
A city council meeting on that subject. So that, that one's coming up. And I don't know, are there any others, Sienna?
As far as bigger ones.
How about the, the North Main?
Oh, the brownstones?
You mean the, the old Kalina shop, the 120?
No, North Main, the five condo buildings.
He's got final, this is Nick, hi, everybody. It's, uh, he's filing engineering should be this Thursday and then he can break ground. We're waiting for Eagle permit for the water main.
So he, he did come up with a, an acceptable development agreement?
He did.
Okay, very good. That's good news. Sarah, that's probably one you were looking for there.
Yeah, thank you very much, Sienna and everyone else.
I don't think.
That's doing well.
I don't think he wanted to come up with that.
He did not. That was quite clear.
He did.
He didn't.
How about Cedar Brook?
Who asked about Cedar Brook?
I, I did. I was just curious where that, where that stands.
I think you mean Blossom Mills.
Sorry, I'm sorry, yes, Blossom, thank you.
So, um, Mr. Mosheri hasn't done anything yet and he said it would be this year and hopefully it's next year. He didn't pull the project, but he hasn't moved forward. Now, on the other hand, Overlook has been in engineering for a year. They actually interviewed two builder, or a builder, I'm sorry, last Thursday to get the bid package put together for that project. That's the 72 condos.
Yes.
Six five-story buildings.
Just south of the OPC?
Yes, sir. And that could be going forward here in the spring, which would be outstanding, a 72 condominium.
Yeah.
And I think. What's the expiration of, I mean, those site plans have an expiration and an end date, right?
So the way policies work before I got here was as long as they're in a review process. They've been through engineering. That freezes the site plan. The site plan's good for a year, but if they keep moving forward with the review, then that freezes the site plan. That's how it's always been done. That's what's going on. Well, Sherry's is a different story. But the Mill, Mill, Milltown, that has expired because they didn't do any engineering or anything. So that one's got to start over if they come back.
Dean, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I was just wondering, what's, what's the process in terms of updating us regarding these requirement, we're working on the builders, these bonds? Is that something that gets submitted, the planning, as a follow-up to the site plan, since it was a requirement of the site plan? As far as I know, we, we were told, yeah, there's, there's a development agreement that's been signed off on, but is there any process or documentation flow?
I'm not sure, are you talking, which one are you talking about, Mr. Bavacqua?
Well, you just mentioned the one on Main Street, that, that there was a development agreement that was agreed upon. My, my point is, is that that was a condition of the site plan. And I'm just wondering if this body gets updated with the documentation so that we can close the loop on those, on those types of projects.
Besides, Nick, it would be very instructive for us to see those documents. I know we're not in that decision, we've sent it on, but it would be very good to see those documents.
That's fine. I, it wasn't, that's fine. When, yeah, I'll get your copy when it's all executed and good stuff, yeah. I mean, you put the conditions where it had to be done and that, that's the approval process. So I, I'll look into it and follow up for sure.
But, but as you know, we're kind of feeling our way along on this subject of development agreements. And none of us are experts. So I think it would be when one is finally agreed to and executed, it would be.
I, I understand the question, I'm sorry. Agreed to, not executed yet. When it is, I understand. When it's executed, absolutely, I'll bring, we'll bring back a copy for the planning commission to see. Right, he agreed to all the conditions.
You know, when you bring them back, feel free to use them as a teaching tool for us. We, we could use the help.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, Christian, you had your hand up.
I think Dean kind of stole my thunder. I was going to ask to see if it'd be possible to get a copy of that development agreement once everything was signed so we could see and use it as a template and a model moving forward.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anyone else? This is on the annual report. Okay, I think we send this on to the city council, but before we do this, I think this is our last meeting of the year. And this is a good time to, for my position here, to thank all of you for the Omen's work you've done this year. 18 meetings. I, I did not count them and I had no idea we met so many times. So that's a, that's a tremendous amount of work and some very challenging subjects. And we made them through and everybody's still smiling and we're moving on to the next. So the commissioners, I want to thank you for your diligence, coming back every week or every two weeks and, you know, putting in the two, three hours a week this requires. And a special thanks to Vidya, Sienna and Maureen for, I mean, we couldn't do this without you three, obviously. And you've, you've done a terrific professional job for us. So thank you very much.
You.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to send this on to the city council.
So moved.
And who moved that? Christian moved and do we have support? Mr. Lord supported it. Okay, very good. Any other discussion on the annual report? The roll call, please.
Hauser?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Bavac, oh, Bavacqua? Clark Martin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you very much again. Okay, number seven, introduction of Beckett and Raider to the planning commission. Who is going to handle this?
I will do the honors.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
Of the introduction. So as you all know, we did go out for an RFP for a master plan update. We awarded that to Beckett and Raider. I kind of wanted to give this opportunity so you all can actually meet someone from Beckett and Raider, even though, you know, the master plan is a lot of city councils doing and blessing and things like that. But I did want someone from the company to at least share with you who they were, their timeframe, their thought process behind the things that they want to do. In addition to give you all the opportunity to ask any follow-up questions to Beckett and Raider. And I will turn this over to Liz, who is here from Beckett and Raider.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thanks for having us here.
Liz Gundin, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just read that on the screen. Good evening, Liz. Welcome to our meeting.
Yeah, thanks for having me. So Beckett and Raider, well, Sienna asked us to be here to sort of introduce who we are and what we've so far and what we, what our next steps are. And also so you could, she said, meet us and see who we are. But normally you'll be interacting with Leah. She was, we had another meeting tonight, so I am working on the plan along with Michelle. But.
Your, your audio is breaking up.
Oh, no. Okay. Is it, is it better now?
It's loud enough. It was, it was just fading in and out.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to speak closer to the computer.
Thanks.
So Beckett and Raider was founded in 1966 in southeast Michigan. We're a disciplinary firm that does planning, landscape architecture and civil engineering. The team also includes for this project Walker, Walker Consultants, the national parking firm. We, the plant, because the city recently overhauled its parking, we wanted to include them, make sure that Rochester's recent parking investment moves forward as part of this master plan process. So, so far, Leah, I'm going to go through a little bit of what we've done so far. Leah and Michelle went on a tour with Mr. Banda, Mr. Wing and Ms. Hall. And then they looked at recent development proposals and potential intensity change areas. We have done so far a detailed review of your existing master plan. And we're in the process of updating existing chapters. The big thing is we're creating an interactive map. And the main focus of this is to provide special, a special analysis of the proposed zoning district. It also includes a lot of other data. And I don't, am I able to share my screen?
You can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Just to give you a glimpse of what this is going to look like. Okay, are you all seeing this?
Yes.
Okay. So the map will have the, right now is click, the proposed zoning areas are selected. So it'll have that, but it also has a lot of other, a lot of other data, like the existing zoning, future land use, existing land use, a lot of property data. Because you're in the SEMCOG region, we have access to a lot of data, which is great. And then also McKenna very graciously shared their data with us so that we could incorporate it all into this tool. So thank, we want to thank them for sharing that. This current map also shows points of the, the driving tour that Leah and Michelle went on. But there's just a lot of information in this that we hope will be a very useful tool for you. So we had a meeting with McKenna and your regular planning consultants and Sienna a few weeks ago to help fully get us on board on what development issues they've been facing and the ways that the master plan can be used to help you with these issues. And we have also taken sustainable Rochester indicators from the Sustainable Rochester Plan and figured out where they could feasibly go in the master plan. Some were easy to incorporate, but some need a little more expansion and that will be what is in the new sustainability chapter. Going forward, our two highest priority items right now are doing the district analysis, tapping, which is underway, and then starting the community engagement process, which will likely need partnership with you on. But I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the current plan is to have a joint meeting in January with the planning commission, city council and DDA, and then we would set a steering committee from there. And I believe that is where we currently stand. So I would be happy to take any questions anyone has or any comments.
Any questions? I don't believe any of the commissioners who are here tonight have been through this before. Mr. Mayor, you were, but you were on the city council. And David Gass, Gasson is not here. He's been through everything in the city. So he's, he'll be kind of our anchor on this thing. David is an architect who I believe said he's been on the planning commission 25 years.
Yes, when I, when I came onto the city council, he was the chairman of the planning commission.
Jeez. And I won't ask you how many years, but.
Been a while.
It's been a while. Yeah, so we're, we're a pretty heady group. You know, we have a lot of very talented people here and I think we can be of real help to you. But we have not been through the planning or the master plan process or review of the master plan process. So feel free to teach as you go and, and bring us along. I think you'll see, you saw tonight, we have a very spirited group. Everyone speaks and everyone has a very valuable point of view. So anywhere we can help, anywhere we can plug in, you have our attention.
That's great. It's just being on the meeting for this little bit, it's obvious that you're a very involved group and that's really exciting from our perspective. So that's great.
Okay, very good. When do, when do you think we will next see you? When will the commission have a first involvement with this?
Sure. So it's, it's somewhat depends. Typically, what we do is we set up a steering committee, which I believe we were going to set up in January. And then that steering committee is sort of reviews each chapter or in this case, it'll, because you have an existing strong master plan, it likely won't be going chapter by chapter. But the steering committee reviews sections and then oftentimes we'll bring it back to the planning commission, ask for comment. And then we do the next section. Once we have a complete draft, then the planning commission will review it before it goes for adoption. So depending, you all can be as involved as you want, depending on who is on the steering committee. It's like, we want a larger steering committee. It's, it's still being formed, so.
I assume in the end, the planning commission has to approve it and then send it on to city council for adoption?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, Vidya, we're going to pick on you when you're around too. So I don't, I don't think she has her audio on. Okay, any other questions? I want to thank you for coming in and introducing yourself and the firm. And we look forward to working with you probably quite a bit over the next year. How long do these things take? Is this a six-month process or one-year process?
Depends on the community, but typically we say about a year. So we've been, I'd say, we've been working on this. We started this fall, so probably next fall would be fully adopted. But, you know, things, things come up and, you know, this committee's changed. So sometimes it's not a cut and dry timeline necessarily.
I know this, the planning law requires that a review happen every five years. Does the city have to report to the state that we're in the process so that they know we're not letting this pass?
We, we did that last year, Dennis. Remember you came in and signed letters. We, we did that last year, Dennis. Remember you came in and signed letters to.
Yeah, 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 okay.
To inform everybody that we were starting ours.
All the various agencies, yeah. Yeah, got it. I remember that. Okay, thank you again for coming in and, uh, we'll see you in, uh, twenty twenty-one.
Yes, thanks again for having me.
Thanks, Liz.
All right, uh, uh, number eight miscellaneous. Does anyone have any miscellaneous?
Chairman, I've got a couple. Oh, go ahead, Patty.
I, I have one. Um, it's a landscape issue. Surprise, surprise. Um, we have a problem with visibility, uh, it, it's vehicular. Uh, vi- visibility on the corner of. Oh no, what is that? I think it's Sec, Second Street and Rochester Road. You know where Penn Station is?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, that's a little dicey corner anyways with people coming in and out of that little, uh, area, but the grasses. They are above the sightline, so, uh, people making a right onto Second Street off of Rochester Road. Um, the visibility is poor. You can't see if, if someone's coming out of the parking lot.
The little strip center?
Yeah, the little strip center. So what's there is there's, you know, there's lower, uh, use. You know, you hedge, but then there's grasses and those grasses have exceeded the heights when, you know, typically it's about four feet when you're sitting in a car. You know, your visibility and you need to have what? A thirty percent cone of vision? It's impeding that vision.
Rely on you to give that a look?
Yes, sir. We'll take care of it. And it's got to be out, yeah, it's, there's a corner clearance. It's a, you take twenty-five feet from curb line to curb line. It's got to be clear vision, thirty inches or lower, so I will take you care of that.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Anyone else have an item?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Nick.
Um, we've been working with Vidya on a couple of things, um. You're going to see, if you can picture on Woodward across from the. Um. The, uh, car wash, there was a home that was converted in the seventies. And it wasn't dentist office, then it became a learning center. Um, it's been there forever. Gentleman selling the building, he's trying to sell it to a financial planner. You know, working with Vidya to. Zone single family. So it's one of the, it's like Hell Row. It's the wrong zoning classification for the use, but it's been there forever. So. We're going to come back with a special project, I'm sorry, a special exception. With Plan Commission do, just like we did for Hell Row, where we look for a lesser intense use. Being office, um, than the learning center. And they're going to come in for the January and February meetings and they just submitted their paperwork, I believe, to Siana on. Last Friday, so we're going to take.
That is an existing non-conforming use, is that?
That's correct. And they want to change that use to a less intense use, which is good.
Okay.
Update on Hell Row, they actually signed a tenant. Um, there, it's a robotics company, but they're doing their prototype development inside the building. Really low impact, so they signed a long-term lease with them. Before that worked out, okay, but they took the rest of the building. Jeff kept his little manufacturing. In there, um, so they were able to lease that building out. And then lastly, I'm working with two developers right now. I think one of the two of them will be successful. We're trying to purchase the Spartan Inn. Both of them would like to convert them to, um. Affordable apartments. There's forty motel rooms right now. Again, non-conforming, uh, it's a conforming B1 use. Problem is for them to put apartments on the first floor. That's not allowed under B1, so I'm working with Vidya and Attorney Croc to find the best way. To probably conditionally rezone that, um, to upgrade that facility, go to thirty units. Total upgrades on the outside of the building, all landscaping on the street. The police department. Is encouraging us extremely heavily to find a way to make this happen as we have. That's our, our toughest site in town right now with the turnover of folks. We'll leave it at that.
Is that a, uh, will this be a section eight housing project?
No, no, it'd be twelve hundred to eighteen hundred a month, but for our town, that's affordable.
Yeah.
They're both, both developers are strong and, um, I'm not sure which one's going to get it. They both. Are trying to get an option on it right now. It's been tried many, many times, but. We just have to find the process to go through and we'll have that in the next couple of days and then I would guess maybe in a third way.
The current owner would sell it and not be involved in the project.
That's correct.
Yeah. Is, is the current owner, owner still Bob Head or did he sell that?
He sold that. It's a, it's a, it's a different gentleman.
Okay. That, that's not Pika, is it?
No, it would just be a special exception. If we go, are rezoning, conditional rezoning saying, this building can stay, this is the site plan, this is the elevations. You're reducing the intensity by knocking down ten units. They have enough parking on site, even though you back out into the road. Um, Vidya and I talked about, I would love to have that torn down and something built new, but they put a lot of money into it three years ago. It's not a teardown, so either it's going to stay what it is or we can work with them to get, and the housing, you have good, two-bedroom apartments for twelve hundred. Um, that'd be great for the workers in town to be able to walk to town and work there, so.
What is it currently zoned?
Uh, B1.
B1, okay.
It could be a, a gas station. It could be a lot worse, so.
Well, that's good news. Good, good luck with that. Good luck with that negotiation.
That's it, sir.
Okay. All right, any other miscellaneous? All right, uh, Siana, any more public comment? Anyone waiting to talk to us?
Uh, hold on one second. Uh, Stuart has something to say, I believe.
Oh, sorry. This is miscellaneous. I was, uh, all I was going to say was wishing everybody, uh. Happy holidays and everybody stay safe out there. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Very much appreciate that. Siana, anyone else waiting to speak?
No, there is not.
Thank you very much. Uh, number ten, back to you.
I'm sorry. I thought we were done there.
We're close and.
We need to cut in on that.
We appreciate the compliment.
Uh, yes, so we will have in January, uh, we will have the public hearing for Chief Financial Credit Union coming back, um. And Nick stole my thunder, but the four-one-one Woodward. That he and Vidya were discussing will also be on that agenda. Um. We do not have the two-ten diversion yet. I know he did state that he was ready to come back, but he did not submit it by last Friday, so. I'm assuming he'll be back in February.
There was mention of a joint meeting. Is, is that planned or scheduled?
Uh, I would defer to Blaine as far as his coordination with the City Council. I don't know if that has been discussed or determined at this point. I know there was discussion about it, but I don't know if that's been set or if it'll be later.
Um, I've, I've heard talk of it, but we don't, don't have, uh.
We haven't set a date.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, Siana, is that it?
That is it for me.
All right. Uh, if there is no other business, uh, I repeat, thanks again to everybody, along with the mayor. Congratulate you on your hard work. Uh, everyone have a great holiday season. Stay healthy, stay safe. We'll see you next year.
You're here.
This meeting is adjourned.
All right, here, Vidya, take care, buddy. Thanks, everyone.
Hello, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.